Chris, are you running this meeting?
Hey Dan, how are you? Can you hear me?
I'm there.
Yeah. Just trying to figure out how to do this.
You don't have Zach or Louise or somebody else that's?
No, just me.
Okay. Well, you got me and Lisa here, we can present the project.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, and you can approve.
Trying to figure out, I'm trying to share a part of my screen, but I can't find that part of the screen.
Hey, Adam.
Hey, guys.
Was that Adam?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Adam.
You see something now?
Yeah.
Yep.
See your screen?
That's good. Hi, Adam.
Hi, how are you?
Good. See ya.
You too.
Good evening, Chris.
John, how are you?
Good, and yourself?
Good, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm doing here. This is what happens when we give Aaron a vacation.
Oh, well.
Oh.
Hi, John.
Hey, Dan, how are you?
Fine, hanging in there.
Interesting communication that Chris forwarded just prior to the meeting.
Dad, is it anything we need to know?
It's regarding the homeowner immediately abutting the property, the one with the, I think it's at the east end.
With the billboard, yeah.
Billboard on it.
Yeah.
Excellent penmanship from the applicant, from the butter.
Yeah.
Very neat.
Yeah. Well, well constructed argument.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Supposing they don't want to give up their income.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's in large measure, the complaint. I did get a note this afternoon from Jennifer Garrity that she would not be in attendance this evening.
Right. And Aaron said there was nobody who had emailed to sign up to speak.
Okay. No, we'll still put the offer up there.
Am I supposed to sign up to speak?
No, I just meant the general public.
Okay.
Now, the applicant has the general right to speak.
Okay, thanks.
You don't speak tonight, you put me on the, put me on the hot seat, because I don't know, have you done with this drawing?
So we're waiting for Lee and Dan?
No, we're actually waiting for all the other commission members. Usually people don't, don't sign in too much ahead of time.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Chris.
Yes, hello, John. Hello, Mr. Spencer.
Hello, how are you?
Good, good.
We go to John Meyer.
Hi, this is Erin. I looked through the packet and I'm seeing Adam, is this a home leasing project?
Yes.
And I think I need to be, do I need to be recused because their CEO is on our board, the Board of the Preservation League where I work? I think that's what I, I think that's why I was told by Corporation Council last time.
I would generally suggest it in my case if we are having trouble getting a quorum now.
Okay. Obviously, you know, if we have a quorum, so that, because I saw it was ACES, so I was, I guess I missed the home leasing, but I wasn't focused on that.
Yeah, it's a partnership. Hi, Erin.
Hi. Okay, I'll just stay on, I'm going to turn my video back off at least.
Like John is back?
Sorry about that, I had to switch computers, I've lost the connection for some reason.
It looks to me like we need all of you to get a quorum here tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, please.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It looks to me like we, we need five members to have a quorum. And it looks like we have five right now.
Okay.
Am I missing anybody?
Is that including me?
Yeah, that's including you.
Okay.
By my count, if I'm missing anybody, though.
No, I think that's correct.
No, you've got five, all right, we can get going, again, I apologize, I got booted off the network for some reason.
So Erin, I would, I would say as far as your conflict goes, you know, you've disclosed it. If, if you feel that this is a connection that will prevent you from being impartial on this application, then I would say you would need to continue to recuse and abstain. If you believe that you can still be impartial, considering that we, we need a fifth member to have a quorum, I think under the law of necessity, it would be acceptable for you to stay on.
Okay, I can, I can definitely be impartial. So, yes. I'll stay on.
Okay, I will call this meeting to order, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Albany Historic Resources Commission. My name is John Myers, I'm the Chair of the Commission, and there will be an opportunity for public comment at an appropriate time. We would just ask that those who do want to make a comment, that you limit your comments to three minutes in duration and that they are germane to the topic at hand and don't stray into the jurisdiction of other commissions and city entities. I will call, do a little roll call, just make sure we have attendees, Commissioner Penkney? Are you muted?
I don't believe he's on the call.
Oh, he's not on the call, okay. Commissioner Hacker?
Here.
Commissioner McInnany?
He's muted, but he's mouthing here.
Okay, everybody, everyone is have muted themselves, Commissioner Kaplan?
She's on.
And Commissioner Tobin?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Garrity informed me earlier today that she was not going to be able to make it, so I declare we do have a quorum with five members present. So, the public meeting tonight is concerning 236 Clinton Avenue, and this is the third visit to the, the Commission for the applicant, and we look forward to your presentation and discussion of the project. I'm assuming that we are, you have passed all the hurdles with the zoning and planning offices and that you have, are coming to the Commission for a certificate of appropriateness to move forward with your project.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. At the last planning board meeting, they issued a negative declaration regarding the Seeker and granted us site plan approval.
Okay.
And for the presentation of the project, I'll have Lisa take the lead.
Hello, everybody, Lisa Rodriguez here with TAP. Okay, so we've made some tweaks to the elevations of, we've sent you a revised packet. Let me see if that's the most current elevation.
Uh, yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, so you were angling for us to divide up the long building facade to mimic the look of six different buildings, including having doors in each building, and we found that we were able to do that. We diggered the lines a little bit since the last time you've seen it to make it make more sense with what's going on inside. So, we've moved a couple doors around the front, we brought some masonry down to grade to help define each of those quote unquote buildings. And I wouldn't get too hung up on colors. We'd like to be able to come back to you with final colors. But I think that this is the type of thing that you're, you were looking for, and so, you know, I would look for feedback, I would hope at the least we could get a conditional approval tonight, and as we've said before, this project is in the stage of seeking funding, and so it isn't completely designed. It's, you know, designed enough to, you know, give you a sense of what we're doing and to budget it to apply for the different grants, so.
And I might point out that the buildings on both sides are correct, our survey crew shot the roof and they points on the power pits at the buildings and gave them Lisa to to scale them into her, to her model.
Yeah, thanks for adding that, Dan, yes, so we've re-entered those buildings on either side and made sure that they are the actual height that those buildings are, so our building is in context with the neighboring buildings in terms of the height.
Okay, so they have been scaled for the, the height of the, the rendering?
Yep.
Okay. And the certainly, it appears to me that you've met the objectives that were identified in the last meeting. Delineating the, the building massing as individual buildings and by widening the masonry piers managed to break up the storefront without interrupting what it's doing inside the building. I certainly invite other commissioners to make comments, but I think you've successfully incorporated many, if not all, of the comments that we had recorded previously.
This is Marilyn Kaplan, I have a couple of questions. But you checked it, but the, the buildings at the far ends, they, you're sure, and Dan, you said so, you're sure they're correct, they don't, they don't quite look like they may be correct. That one is so much shorter and one is, which is essentially almost a three-story building on the left, and it looks so much shorter than existing, and then the building at the right end is so much taller, but you're saying it's correct.
Two and a half stories on the left, Marilyn, and we did, we, our survey crew shot the top of all the buildings, shot the ground at all the buildings and gave that information to Lisa to incorporate into her drawing, which is also on the same benchmark that we, that we set up for that building plan, so I believe they're correct.
Yep.
Okay, it, it looks funny, but I, I trust that you've doubled, you've double-checked that.
Yes.
And I have a question, I don't remember how we, we kind of numbered these buildings just for conversation, or the building sections, I mean, for, for last week, so if we started the left, one, two, three, four and six, I guess I'm interested in. I, I concur with John Myers that nice changes that have been, that have been made. The, I have some questions on the windows and the doors and the entrances on numbers four and six. So, are they store, what's the use of the first floor interiors of those two buildings?
Okay, building number four, that goes into the leasing office for home leasing?
Yeah.
And building six goes into the community room, and yes, I had in mind a storefront glazing system for those two entrances.
Okay, and you have them, are they, are they coming down to the sidewalk or pretty close to it, or?
So, the first one in number six, or the one that serves number six, that is right at sidewalk level, and then there's this stoop. I'm calling it a stoop because even though it's, it's kind of a ramp, it's flat, and so all the doors come down to the stoop and then there will be steps down to the sidewalk level.
So, I'm sorry, on number six?
Yep.
There's a primary entrance and that has the little entrance hood, right?
Yep, yep.
And going to the left, that kind of tall, thin opening, that's a window?
Yes.
And then further left, that, that is windows or doors?
For, that's the main entrance to the apartments that goes into the lobby for, for module five you're asking about?
Let me just check that we're talking about the same thing, so we're at, we're at section number six, right?
Okay. And we're building six. Building six. All of that, all of that opens into the community room.
Okay. All three openings?
Yes.
And doors are where the entrance hood is, right where the arrow is right now on the screen? And as well, the double glazing all the way to the left of that building section there?
Yes, well, I can't.
I think that's a window.
Yeah, that's, that's a window.
Yeah.
Those are windows, okay. And then, as we go to building section per elevations four, move over, going from left to right, it would be double window, primary entrance, window, double window, yes?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Can you review the materials, I don't have any access, I'm, actually, we haven't dropped for it on the, on the job site, so I don't have access to all my old stuff. Can you review what the materials for the, the, the overall project, this elevation?
So.
And these elevations too, actually.
This elevation is all brick, brick veneer, except for the, you know, where we have storefronts and glazing and where the bay windows pop out. So there are two box bays at modules one and three, and then there are angled bays at module five. Those will be covered in like a cement board product or high density cement board. The lintels and sills in the brick are cast stone. The cornice up at the top is a combination of ephesus and phypon elements mixed together. Then, when you go to the side of the building, the brick carries around partway, so that for the most part, when you're passing by the building, you see the brick only, when you, for the sub portion of the side of the building that you see coming in both directions. And partway, the side switches to the cement board panels. Brick carries on down at grade level and wraps around to the rear of the building, so at the lowest level facing Orange Street is brick, again with cast stone lintels and sills, and above that is the cement board panels. And then there's recesses where the sliding doors are, and that is cement board siding. And, oh, so the windows in front are clad wood windows, and the windows on the sides and rear are vinyl windows.
On modules one, two, three, above the first floor storefront glazing, are there canopies there, or those brown, brown?
Yeah, so the brown is flush with the facade, kind of like a signboard. The, there is a canopy over the main entrance for the Aces incubator, right there where you have your cursor.
Yeah.
So we've put, we've located a couple of the doors under the box bay to help with shielding from the weather, but have not otherwise put canopies there. Except for the main entrance for Aces.
And does that canopy project out to the the width of the ramp or the elevated platform across the face of the building or all the way out to the steps?
Just about the width of the elevated platform. It does not cover the steps.
Okay.
So I guess for Liza and Adam and John, the Liza, I think you said something about a conditional approval, or I know there's an approval needed for the next step. And then I guess my question is, as John Myers said initially, it looks like a lot of, a lot of work's going on here in a direction that he seems comfortable with and I'm uncomfortable with. What kind of approval is needed and would the condition be that the project comes back to us to review, a final review of materials and colors and details, things like that?
As clean an approval as we can get, because this is part of the, the application that's going in Friday.
Yep.
So we'd like to have the verbiage of whatever approval we can give as broad as possible and bring us back only for maybe colors and final materials of construction or something like that.
Yeah, if that could possibly be done with staff, I don't know if you have staff that could do that rather than come back to a meeting?
That can be handled in a number of different ways. I would think that we have enough information to issue design approval. And that would be conditioned on receipt of, you know, the physical samples of the materials, sections through the front of the building in each of the six elements so that we understand the the depth of projections and some of the detailing. But again, that can be shared with staff, and staff can distribute that to the commission for review. And if there is some need to explain something, then we could invite you back for another meeting.
John, I'd like to add to the list of things we'd like more information on would be the exterior lighting and the railings and some of the detailing of the, the ramp structure, the ramp and stairs.
Seems fair enough.
Yeah, I think that's, that's certainly appropriate, since lighting hasn't been talked about. That is certainly an aspect of this that could be considered. Lisa, I did notice in the very first package that you submitted to us that the rear elevation was originally proposed to have, I guess, some amount of brick and clad wood windows, and that has been altered in the last submission we looked at and this one to be the vinyl windows and more of the, the large rigid planks as a siding material, which is fine. It's, it's not a as visible an elevation.
No, I don't, I don't remember it that way. I don't have, I don't have that first submission, submission handy, but I oh, you know what, I, I may have done that because I thought that HCR was requiring that there be brick on all four elevations, and we realized they are only looking for it on the rear at grade level. And there was a significant cost savings to changing it to a cement board product.
No, that, that's fine. It's a contemporary building, so. And I assumed that that was for cost savings.
Yes. Yeah, there's a, this is a pretty expensive site to develop because there's a lot of fill there because it was an old creek bed. It's been filled in, buildings demolished. They've done significant archaeological work on the site all the way through a phase three. It's been pretty expensive to pursue developing this site.
Yeah, and actually, in the conversation I had with Commissioner Garrity, she did confirm that Hartgen had done the all of the investigation work on the site and that that was completed to shipos satisfaction.
Yes.
It's not an issue for us to discuss this evening. Are there any other comments from commissioners?
No, I think it's, it's a nice project. Liza, you worked hard on it. Actually, Adam and David, and I assume everyone has. And I look forward to seeing it again.
Yeah, it'll only improve as we, you know, get in more real with the materials. It will get better and better. Thank you guys for your input. I think it was all really valuable.
Yes, thank you.
Now, we certainly appreciate your, your flexibility in accommodating a lot of the concerns that had been raised. I think it's a nice-looking project. We do have, Chris, how do we want to handle the letter from the neighbor with the billboard?
Yeah, you know, I think you've got the, the response from Rob from Corporation, Rob McGee from Corporations Council.
Yes.
Unless there was prior zoning that didn't allow for these sites to be developed, which I don't think is the case. You know, there's no, I don't know that there's any land use law saying that they have a right for the side of their building to be seen. It's, you know, again, it's one of those non-conforming signs. It's unfortunate for the owner, but I don't think it's a matter for either the HRC or the planning board. If anything, that could, you know, potentially be a civil matter.
Yeah.
But it does not seem that there's anything, you know, in terms of your regulations or the planning boards. So let, let Amy chime in as well.
I would, I would concur with that and just, you know, just to state again that I don't think the city has any liability in this matter. To the extent that liability may even exist, but I'm not sure that it does. The, the legal, the legal authorities that I can find all say that there's no property right in the the ability to be seen from a public street, which, you know, somewhat makes sense just in, you know, you have to be able to develop property. If everybody could assert a view shed from a public way, then that would really interfere with a lot of people's property rights.
Yeah. Yeah, I think a billboard on the side of a building in an urban context is kind of at risk for future development. So, you know, there are no guarantees.
Exactly.
Are there any other members of the public present that would like to speak to this project? Do we have anyone signed up, Christopher?
No, there was nobody that signed up.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'd entertain a motion then from the commission to act on this proposal.
I'll move that we approve the, the project as presented to us with these elevations with the condition that the final documents illustrating materials and various details of construction be submitted for our review. I'm afraid that if we list too many, the lies, the ramp, and this, the that, that that might, that might not be advantageous. So I tried to find some words there that were more general, materials, details, samples.
So moved.
Okay, do we have, was that a second, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion has been put forward and seconded. Since we can't really see each other, I'll just do a roll call, and if you can indicate yay or nay, that would be the best way to deal with this. Commissioner Tobin?
Yay, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kaplan?
Yay.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yay.
Commissioner McInnany?
I think he's saying yay.
You had a thumbs up from him.
Oh, thumbs up, okay. I didn't see the thumbs up, okay. And myself, I vote yay. So we have five affirmative votes, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just want to point out with those existing buildings, why one seems so much taller. If you look at the windows, the one on the right is, it must have like 12-foot ceiling heights in there, something like that. Windows are really tall and narrow, plus it's on the uphill side. And then the other building is much plainer, is much simpler detailing, I think older, and much lower ceiling heights. So they, they are accurate. And I think that's why, yeah, I think that's why they, they look off. They're just different eras, different ceiling heights, and, and one is on the downhill side and one is on the uphill. It doesn't help that the short one's on the downhill side and the tall one's on the uphill side, but I think that's why. But thank you all for your time and your input. Appreciate it.
Great project. We look forward.
Thank you. It's a nice project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye. Did we lose everybody?
No.
Okay. Are there?
There. No, I'm still here.
Okay, all right. This Zoom window that I've got is a little strange. Are there any other matters to come before the commission this evening or anything that we would like to discuss?
Yes, I, I wanted to bring up the office building because this came up on Facebook yesterday, so I wanted to confirm. I think I know the answer to this. The office building that's immediately adjacent to the Center Square Historic District across from the Harmonious Bleeker Library at the corner of Dove and Washington Ave. My understanding, somebody suggested that because it is adjacent to the historic district that the HRC had jurisdiction over it. And somebody else suggested that that was only in the case of new construction that's adjacent to the historic district, that we don't have jurisdiction. I'm sorry, I'm giving my dog water. We don't have jurisdiction over alterations to existing buildings that are adjacent to the historic district, which makes common sense to me, but I wanted to confirm that that is everybody's understanding on the commission as well as Chris and Corporation Council.
Yeah, from the city's perspective, that is correct. That is what it says in the USDO, so otherwise we'd be regulating pink colors across some historic districts.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just a little update on that in particular, you know, I didn't get down there. But my understanding is that there was some work that was done, and then there was some brick work that is being done, was being done temporarily to hold shore things up and that they have submitted some mortar samples for an analysis so they can do, get the correct mortar recipe. So I think that is temporary. So at least that is what we've been told, so. But again, I didn't read the Facebook post in particular, but it's, it's a great opportunity for the preservation community that knows a lot about that to reach out to a property owner that's not in historic district and give them some advice. You know, because certainly there are people who do work that may or may not know exactly the correct mortars to use and understand the damage that they could be doing. So, you know, it's, the city can't always reach in under our guidelines, but there's certainly enough preservations with a lot of experience that would, you know, probably be beneficial for them to reach out and help, help some people who could use a little bit of guidance.
No, that's a good observation.
Yes, and I think Historic Albany Foundation is aware of the project, so hopefully that happens.
Well, we can certainly alert Kara to it.
Yes, yeah, Pam Howard was, well, I was the one who flagged Pam Howard on it. So, and she spoke, I guess Historic Albany issued an opinion, but when it went before the planning board.
Okay.
That was the only thing I wanted to raise.
Okay. Are there any other matters that, of interest? It's a very quiet group this evening.
It is, it is.
Maybe we're all pandemicked out here.
Could be.
Or zoomed out.
Could be that too. I have an Albany High virtual reopening forum at seven, so my mind is, is slightly focused over there.
You're a different place, so.
Yes.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn if people are so moved.
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be well.
Thanks.
Yep. Take care, everybody.
I know.
Bye-bye.